Hello Defender viewers, my name is Christian Bell, I'm a s- I am an intern with the Defender in a current high stu- student. Today I am here with Sharika Barnes, a Park Hill native who has began a campaign in running for Park Hill Board of Education. Hello, Mrs. Barnes, how are you?
Fine and you?
Pretty good, pretty good, I can't complain. Um, I wanna start off by thanking you um for taking the time out to meet with us at the Defender. So thank you for that, and Julie as well, Julie is her campaign manager. Um, thank you both for meeting with us.
You're welcome, it's exciting. I did, I'm like so excited, cuz I did like, I was the editor of my yearbook, so like this is like going back to high school and like remember doing interviews, so this is like exciting, I remember doing this in high school, so this is exciting.
I'm actually editor for my newspaper currently in my school, so this is like a good experience for me as well. Um, we can get into the question now, um, um, would you first like to start off by telling us about yourself?
Sure, um, so I um have been in Park Hill School District for over thirty years, first uh as an alumni, I graduated um in ninety-two, and then um also as a parent, I had two daughters go through Park Hill. Um, one graduated in twenty eighteen and the other in twenty twenty when the pandemic first started, um. I still, my nieces, she still is, um, she's at Lead, which is one of the um high schools, and then I have several family members that are still in Park Hill um School District and um from elementary school to junior high to not even in school yet, so this is very personal to my heart, um. And I've, like I said, I've been in the district for thirty years and I just since thirty years of me graduating, things have not changed in Park Hill School District, I mean Park Hill is a wonderful school district, but they just could do some more things to improve and make it better, so um my top four focus that I'm running or key issues, as some people call it, um, is for responsible and equitable in- infrastructure, Park Hill always is building new and better, however, they forget about the one, the existing or the older that are already there. And so um we just need to make sure that we're being physical responsible because it's not fair to a student that isn't at a newer school, that they don't have the same infrastructure as the newer schools, you know, lately I think they wanna put a bond on to fix the one of the junior highs, the roof is caving in, and it's one of the older buildings. However, they wanna also build a forty-five million dollar new elementary school, so you know, so it's like, let's make sure we're being equitable and making sure that we are fixing the things that need to be fixed first before we move into another school. Another thing that I'm wer- running on is leadership and discipline transparency, and so um with the online school and all the pandemic and just there's been a whole bunch of issues that have gone on in our district, which everyone is aware of, we just need the um transparency from our, from our school board of what they are implementing, we might not like the answers as a community, and that's okay, but I think that if that communication is there and they, and they give a reason as to why something, a decision is made, it just makes a lot more easier as opposed to the gossip and the secondhand information. Um, and also with the discipline, like there needs to be like, you know, make sure that it's the same for every student regardless of color, regardless of issue, like there needs to be the same type of discipline for everybody regardless of the issue. Um, my third issue is are uh students prepared for life, um, when you graduate from high school, some of us go off to college. Um, but however, some of us don't, some of us go off to the military, some of us go off into trade schools, some of us go and be police officers or firefighters. So high school is where it stops, and so are we making sure that we are getting our students not only academically wonderful, but also are they accountable, self-efficient, and culturally adept citizens who are equipped for real-life cha- challenges, like are they able to deal with people that don't look like them? Like are they, are they able to function in a society? Cuz those probably will be the people that they serve, right? If you're going in to be a firefighter, if you're going to be a police officer, nine times out of ten, you will be working with people that do not look like you, and are you prepared to deal with people that do not look like you? Uh, and then um my fourth issue is diverse teachers curriculum, um. Like I said, Park Hill is wonderful, but the students have advanced, like there's more students that look like me than thirty years ago, however, the staff, the administration, none of them have changed from the thirty years ago, there is very little little diversity in our, in our teachers and our administrators, and um and also um diverse curriculum, like for instance, my daughter had a um AP um English class and all the authors were white men. Like are we, are those the only people that can write a haiku, are those the only people that can do um poe- poetry, like there's different people, I mean there's women, there's Asians, there's Hispanics, there's blacks, there's all kind of people who we could pull that information from, right? And so I believe that um not only do students of all cultures succeed when they have teachers from diverse backgrounds, but then um the te- the students who see someone that look like, like them succeed as well, right? That they feel empowered, so those are my four key issues.
Um, thank you for that. Um, could you tell us what, like could you pinpoint one single thing that like made you wanna begin running for um the board?
Um, to be quite, I I was a very like um involved parent at Park Hill, I was the um vice president of the band, backers for the band, and my daughters was like Girl Scout cooking mom, like I mean I was in, you name it, I mean, room parent, PTA, I was in it all, and so um to be quite honest, I really wasn't very focused on our school board when my kids were in school because I was at ten other events, right, choir events or band events or traveling for activities or sports, and so um but then when twenty twenty happened, when my daughter came home, um they started actually putting the um school board on YouTube, so you could watch it, right, like so you could either watch it right then, or you could go back and watch it when um you had a moment, and so it really was eye-opening to realize all these decisions were being made, and nobody understood how they were being made or why they were being made, you would just get a communication outlet later saying, the school board has approved X, right, and you're like well, I didn't even know X was an option, and so I, I think um through that process, I realized like this is where, where all the decisions are made, right? Like we are always like, who came up with that decision, or who came up with that conclusion, and it wasn't until I started watching um those, and then when they started going back to in-person, and I've been to quite a, almost all the in-person, and then they have work sessions, which that's a whole different thing where they discuss like why they want a bond issue, or you know, why, why they um want a new s- new stadium, or why they want this, you know, and so there's a lot of breakdowns of, of how they wanna spend the money, or, or what kids are really doing good academically here, but what kids are struggling, and so I think that helped me realize that there wasn't even playing field, like I feel like um that, I mean, they try their best, but I don't think that every decision, like most decisions that Park Hill has made through this process of me listening to the school board meeting is, how do we look on the outside? Right, like how are we perceived to the community, like how, like you know, we might be in, you know, the top hundred schools in the, in the US, or you know, we might be the, one of the top schools in in Missouri, which is wonderful, but why, but that's the outside, right? But are we taking care of the inside, like are students getting everything they need? Regardless of culture or um you know, physical handicaps or whatever the issue may be, um, are teachers getting everything that they need, or getting all the help and assistance they need, and then on top of that, realizing that our teachers in Missouri are the fiftieth ranked fiftieth in compensation for being paid, like we're last, right, so but however, we, we expect all these demands and all these things from teacher, and be- in being a former educator, I understand that it is not just the the seven thirty to three thirty when the kids come into the building, like you're up before that, you're after that, you're doing lesson plans, and so if we are expecting all these things from our teachers, are we compensating them based on what, what our expectations are, right? And I think that, and just learning, like there's just so much better ways that they could handle things, like it's great, but there's better, right, and let's, let's be okay with the great, but let's do better, like why not?
And speaking on like representation of board, what is your take on student representation in the Board of Education?
Um, I actually think that's wonderful because prior to me even thinking about running for school board, my, actually what I wanted to do was a a co- a community accountability panel, and that's actually how Julie and I met, is just going around to some of these board meetings and just listening and I, um, with all the incidents that happened, I felt like somebody needed to hold the board responsible, like there needed to be someone in the community, parents, community members, um, students, um, to make sure that they feel like they're being heard through the process, and so um and it was, and the going through the process, it was just a lot of like this needs to happen, and this needs to happen, and I was like, okay, this seems like a bigger project than maybe I can do alone, so how about I go for school board? And at least I know that I can represent the people that, that have, that I'm trying to represent and represent everybody that wants to happen, because it's, it's a big, big project, but I love the idea of students, um, through this process too of running for school board, I've had a lot of roles. You know, one of my big things when I wanted to do this is like I wanted to reach out to the teachers, and I wanted to reach out to the principals and and the students, and uh my niece actually um wanted me to come and talk to um you know, like the Black Student Union at her school, you know, and other things, and and I was like, oh great, sure, I'll come talk to them, you know, about this process and ask them questions, and that's a big no-no. Like there's all these rules with Park, with Park Hill, and then maybe other school districts too, that you can't like talk to students on campus, and you can't talk to teachers on campus and administrators, and don't put anybody in an uncomfortable position, and there's Missouri ethic, ethic rules, and there's Missouri National T-shirt Association rules, and then there's Park Hill Teacher Association rules, and there's PTA, National PTA rules, and there's Park Hill PTA rules, so um yeah, uh a new person doing this process, it's learned a lot of rules of what I can and can't do, and um, and which, to me, why not, like why not talk to those people, cuz aren't those the people you're representing, but I shall follow the rules, because that's how, that's how I get on the board.
I actually just uh wrote quickly, just had a question I wanted to ask in the vein of kind of the incidents and stuff that happened last year, just cuz I know that that's what a lot of our viewers, especially our younger black people and younger black students, and I'm just interested in kind of the year after all those incidents happen, kind of just what your thoughts are, and kind of what maybe you would want to do to ensure that like these very racist things that are happening, you know, that we're taking some type of action steps to do something about it.
Um, well, I um, I appreciate that there's a diversity, diversity and inclusion department or division in Park Hill, because there was not one, when I went there, I mean, it's only three years old. So of course, it's, it's new, and I, I uh know Dr. Coward got a lot, a lot of pushback when she first tried to introduce that, just talking to her personally, you know, some people you know, and I feel like that's a great start. You know, it, I've sat on a few of the forums and listened to what other parents want. Um, so it's nice to know that other parents kind of feel the same way that, that you know, we need to do better and we can do better, and let's make sure we're making everybody feel included, um, but I also think that we- we're getting a new superintendent coming up, right, and so I think the new superintendent needs not only take on that mantle, but continue the process, because the diversity of students has dramatically increased every year at Park Hill, right, like there are more students that look like like more of us, and more like they're, you know, of all different backgrounds, right, and so they need to make sure that students feel represented, you know, and feel important and feel empowered, and that can't just be by having the Black Student Union, right, and that can't just be um by having Hispanics, there's a Hispanic language group, I mean like there's a Muslim, I mean, there's all these different groups, which is wonderful, right, but but they're meeting with a teacher and how much power do they really have, like they, do they just meet because they wanna see somebody that looks like them? You know, or are they meeting to actually try to have some ideas that they want implemented in the school? You know, and I know through the process, they went and talked to the students, and they talked to the teachers, and um they talked to parents in the community, like what can we do, but I really feel personally that it starts with like inside, right, like if there's teachers there to don't, that aren't down for the diversity and inclusion, like this is what we're trying to implement, then they don't longer need to be part of Park Hill, right? If there, if there's administrators who are no longer part of that, that idea, then they no longer need to be there. I mean, I know there's teacher shortages and all these kind of things, but, but everybody has to buy in, right? Like the parents have to buy in, the community has to buy in, the teachers have to buy in, the students have to buy in, and if that's not gonna happen, then this just saying you're trying to do something just to make yourself look good, right? But you're not really trying to do anything, and I feel like, um that would be sad to try to like, like do all this work after all this headlines that we've had and not implement anything, right, and not, not have exactly something that we can clearly say based on X, we have decided we will not have all white books in, in our senior English class, we will make sure that our books are from all diverse people, I mean, you know, there needs to be something to show that yes we are making the efforts to make sure we are, are doing everything we can to make it sure everybody feels included, and I know um that's the big issue, but I feel like you know, there's a lot of pushback with that now with the, with the politics, right, um recently two weeks, I mean, I guess two weeks ago now, I went to um Jeff City and talked at the Missouri Education Com- Commission, right, and it was like so there's all these bills that they're trying to implement in public schools, right, that you can't teach on historical facts, so whose historical facts can we not teach on, right, so or are the bill that they're trying to push back on teachers needing to give parents like thirty days notice before they implement quote-unquote a controversial topic, but controversial to who? Like, you know, like who am I offending, right, who, like, and so I feel they're like, who, who are all these bills sent it around? Are they sent around people that um, that already have no re- representation at the school? Or are they sending around the people who already have representation at the school? And I think them is, that Park Hill could make sh- be like a front-runner in that and say no based on all these things that have happened, and we've learned a lot of things through our various forums and talking with teachers and staff and students and the community, we are for sure not implementing this, and we are making sure that our students can feel more included through the process.
And speaking on like diversity issues and things of that nature, what um is your take on like the racist slavery petition, petition that was going around a couple months back, what is your take on that?
Um, it was horrible, but was, was I shocked? No. I hate to say that, but no, I mean, I, like I said, I've been in the district for thirty years, so it's not, the difference is, is that it got out. Like there's been a whole bunch of incidents that have happened, sad to say, but I'm sure not my, not only Park Hill, but, but other districts also that um, that no, there's been a whole bunch of issues that have happened, and I'm pretty sure that's just one that got out just based on, people got to see it, right, which is sad for us, but it's true. And so therefore, um we need, I, I don't know, I, I do know, actually, I kind of have had a lot of conversations about the slavery petition, right, like these are fourteen-year-old kids, right, that did this, so a lot of adults failed them, correct? Like a lot of adults, their parents failed them because they didn't feel like they needed to have any topics or talk about race because it didn't, it didn't affect them in any way, right, they'd never told their kids, no, you shouldn't call someone a slave, or you shouldn't do, you, right, so those are the, being a former educator, parents are the first teachers, right, you, there are certain things or rules or regulations that you need to teach your kids, regardless of what color you are, like to be decent, to be a good person, you know, whatever, so parents failed. First adults to fail them, second adults to fail them were the teachers, I mean, my daughter had a history class at Park Hill, and the history teacher made it like the slaves freely got on the, the slave ships and just was so happy to come over here and work for America for free. Like there was nothing about the, the horrendous things that happened to the slaves, or the hundreds of thousands of people that died, right, so second group of people to fail them was the teachers, because you are in classes to teach people, it's some hard topics that have to be talked about, but they're high schoolers. You know, let's, let's have the hard topics, and let's have some conversations and some real in-depth, we can't just have Martin Luther King and Rosa Parks, and that's all we ever talk about when we talk about black people, right, um. Third, people that failed him was their coaches, they were on, they were on football team, right, so I'm pretty sure I was in sports before, I don't know, you know, like there's people that, that play and say things to each other, and name calling, and, and and those kind of things, and so that's totally different than calling somebody a slave, right, or calling somebody something that's not, not appropriate, and so they failed them. Because they were on the bus when they did this, right, they had, they had an adult on a bus, so another adult, like continuous process, um, you know, uh, so all these adults have failed them, and so then they did something horrible and awful, but they're fourteen. Like who, nobody gave them the tools that they needed at fourteen, I mean, you should know right from wrong at fourteen, but if no one's giving you that information and you've always been, feel entitled, then how do you know what is and isn't wrong, correct? So my um view on that was, I don't, I felt like they should have been suspended, but um, and there, there's one kid that had some other issues that's going on that for sure, he should, he should not have, he should not come back, like he just, I mean, he was threatening to do bodily harm to people, so like for sure, he doesn't need to come back, but but the other three, I really feel like they should have been suspended, I feel like they should have did some kind of um recuperation, like they should have had to go to during the time they were out of school, I felt like they needed to go to Negro League Museum and do some history lessons, I felt, feel like they should have sat down with some history teachers from like um various colleges, or people who are really into those, and explain how this affects people, and how what you said was so hurtful, right? And then I feel like, quote-unquote, they should have went on an apology tour, they should have went to all the Black Student Uzes, three at each one at each high school, and at least started with those students and say, you know what, I did not know that this was horrible, I did not understand how impactful this was to you, and you know, what I did was pretty not okay. And I wanna apologize to you, because I feel like if students have those kind of, kind of, kind of issues, like it's life-changing, right, because now they're out of our school, right? And so now what are they gonna just go to another school and, and terrorize people? Like there was no, I mean, they're not in that school anymore, right, so, but there's no lessons learned, right? There's no, no, not, they have no, learned nothing from the process, other than their parents filing the lawsuit to try to get them back into school. Like nobody during this process has like taken responsibility and said, you know what, what I did was crappy. And during this process, I mean, it's even different if during the lawsuit, if they would be like during this process, we have learned that this, this, and this is horrible, right? And we are so sorry about what we have done, and based on this, my son has, I mean, I just, no one has like done that through this process, and I think, so now they're just gonna go to another school district and terrorize some more people. So what, what did anybody learn through this process, right? The black students are still impacted, they're still upset, their feelings are still hurt. These kids are gone, their friends are upset that they're gone, so like there has been no no healing in that process, just by kicking some kids out of school, right?
As one of your claims, you stated the school, that schools in the Park Hill District need to do a better job in preparing students for like regular life, not college, but do you think that Park Hill is even doing a great job in educating students about college and different college avenues and like how to apply for college and things of that nature?
Great question, um, I will say, um during this process of having two kids that graduated to, through Park Hill, I had to, I had to navigate a lot of things myself, right? I had to figure out a lot of things out for myself, just um because I had two kids that did two different paths, right, I had one kid that like did the A-plus program, which is like you do the two years at Educo. So she already knew that that's what she wanted to do, she's like, I'm not for sure what I wanna be when I grow up, so why don't I do that process, right, so it made it, she was like, I was like, she was like, okay, what do I need to just take to graduate, and then I just wanna go to community college and take some classes and kind of figure out what I wanna do there. Right, which was, was fine, I had an, but I had another kiddo that was like I know I wanna go college, I wanna go to medical school, I wanna do this, this, and this, and so I was like, whoa, okay, so how do we go about this process? Right, because I need to know, and I was just lucky enough that she was able to get into a pro- couple of programs in Park Hill that um, like the Avid Program, and so they helped her like do some college tours, and they helped her um look for scholarships, and I was looking, but I mean, like if I, if she was not in that program, I don't know that I would know everything I needed to know. And that was only because I did a lot of digging as a parent, right, I feel like, um our counselors are just like checking some boxes, like you need to take this many English, you need to take this many math, you need to take this many science. You know, um, you all, everybody has to graduate with an AP class, like whatever the, the requirements are, right, and so there's a lot of different avenues. Like for instance, I said, my oldest, she'd like went up to the Northland Career Center, right, so she was like, hey, I wanna try some different stuff, like maybe I wanna go up here and learn about this, or I wanna go, which was so awesome, correct? Um, and um but you know, a lot of people pushed back on that, they're like, why, why is she not in school, like everybody else and doing, but you know, but then they also had the same program for my kiddo that wanted, that wants to go into medicine, right? The way she could go in the hospitals and sit in on surgeries and like, so, but you have to know about those programs, right, you have to like inquire about those programs as, as a parent, or like if they send home a piece of paper, and it's not in the bottom of your kid's backpack, you know, or that maybe they mentioned in an assembly, you know, so you have to actually physically look for that information, correct, and so that is part of the issue is just making sure, and I think that um sometimes the, the students of color depending on where they are, they get lost in that process, right? But not even students of color, just parent, just kids whose parents may not have the time, like some parents work two or three jobs, right? I mean, some parents, uh, you know, are a single-parent household, so not everybody has the time to invest to look into that information, so they're very much trusting that the school is gonna give them all that information, correct? And so, but like, but like I said, my daughter went up to Northland Career Center, like a couple of her friends, you know, like they have Adam, Adam Kinnick up there, right, so like that's what they went into, you know what I'm saying, or working on planes, so so the difference is, is that, or they have computer programming stuff up there, right, so like, but you had to know because they were like maybe college isn't what I wanna do, correct, so, so I just love the fact that like there's options there. Um, I've learned through this process too though that word of mouth is very good, like a lot of parents reach out to me now because their kids are in that process, and they're like, hey, where did you find this information at, I heard you were able to find this, right, and so that's that's kind of what, what we've had, had to learn how to do, or like I've done that with my niece, you know, like, hey, make sure you take the ACT for this, or make sure you do this for this, correct, because I mean, they tell, they make them take it, but like maybe you need a certain grade to get into a certain school, or, you know, or to get a certain scholarship, correct, so I just think that they help, but I think that um, the information could be much easier to navigate, like it could be I mean, if that, if that's what they wanna do, prepare kids for life, because academically, we're wonderful, right, like all these kids are graduating at a certain percentage, and at a certain GPA, and so many, you know, the, the ACT score is at a certain level, which is great, but like, you know, how many kids had to navigate that on their own, or like with a lot of help from someone else? Hopefully that answered your question, Ms. Kristin.
Um, and here's like final set of questions. Um, what is the biggest issue you, that you think is, is like following our students right now? And what do you think could be done to fix the issue? And as a member of the board, what will you do to fix that issue?
Um, I think the biggest issue now, just within the last like eighteen months, almost two years, is probably mental health. Like, do we have enough people to help our students mentally? Like, do we have enough social workers on staff? Do we have enough counselors? Are we doing enough sessions to have people come in and um make sure our students are okay? Right? Because everybody, I mean, you know, on school, it's rough, it's hard, you, you know, like, you go to school, you got, you know, some people are wearing masks, some people aren't wearing masks, it's political, people losing friends over like, I mean, like, it's just a lot going on, right? You might not be able to participate in a sport that you used to be able to participate in because they don't have a coach anymore or they cut it out. You know, because of what's, that's, you know, it's too, the numbers are too high. So I just think like mentally, are we preparing our youth to deal with all the things that are coming at them at once? That's a lot coming at, at our youth right now at once, right? Like, and our, and I think our job is to make sure we're giving the students every tool because if you're not okay mentally, then you don't care about your grades. You don't care about anything else that's going on, right? Like, you, you're not concerned about any of that other stuff. So you have to make sure that the students are okay and whatever we can do to make sure the students are okay, then, I mean, and it might be like some of the, the racist stuff is messing with some people and some of the, you know, there's just a whole bunch of stuff that's happening. And so we need to make sure we, every student is feeling valued and heard through that process and has someone to talk to.
Um, well, that's it for me. Was there anything, final thing you wanted to say or Julie or anything or Ryan?
Um, no, I just want to say thank you so much for taking the time to talk to me. I really appreciate it. I got to learn so much. Uh, I told Ryan, I was like, it's so cool when he asked me like, is it okay for intern to jump in? And I'm like, sure, this is exciting, like, so, so fun. Um, I'm excited for our future. I told Julie that all the time. I said, if you guys are this motivated and you guys wanna change the world this much, then like, we will be okay when we're old. You know, so that is my goal. Um, always wanting to make sure that whatever um I put out there, you know, I always tell my, my daughters, like, you know, I can't ask you to do or be better if I'm not willing to do and be better, right? So this process has been pretty hard and horrible and horrible things have been said and my Facebook page has been uh, people have said so many horrible things already and it's just the beginning, right? So um, and I guess, you know, and I told Ryan that when I talked to him too, I was like, I need to do like a one-on-one of like how to run for school board because this has been a mind-blowing experience. And I will say, this is not for someone that has two jobs. This is not for someone that has three kids that they have to run around and do ten different things with. Like, you have to like have a lot of focus to be able to do this. And I, and I think it's sad that it's set up like that, right? Because those people are just as valued as anyone else, correct? Um, and it's a non-paid job. So like, everybody's opinion should matter the same amount regardless, right? Um, but the last things I have to say is just go to like Shrikar Barnes for Park Hill on Facebook or barnsforparkhill.com if anyone out there in your um page wants to donate. I'm not, I'm running nonpartisan, so I'm not taking any money from big packs or, you know, from any particular political party. All my donations are coming from small donors. Um, there are ten people running for two spots on our board and um, some of them are pretty extreme, from one extreme to the other. I'll just say, say that if you wanna research any of those wonderful people. Um, and again, if you guys have any questions, um, I am always willing to come back and do a second interview or if you have people that say, oh, I wanted you to ask for that. I am always willing to message me or email me and I am always happy to answer questions.
All right. Thank you so much.